I can't help you with that.
Why I was late? To get in the shirt without.
I don't speak over Ruth Griffin. So I would entertain a motion to come out a non-public session and to seal the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
And please have a roll call vote. Do we need a roll call? We do.
Yes. Okay, that wasn't right. Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Taber.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Moreau.
Yes.
Counselor Bagley.
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi.
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Mayor McCacklin.
Yes.
And can we now have a
Roll call of attendance. Mayor McCacklin.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Here.
Counselor Taber.
Here.
Counselor Denton.
Here.
Counselor Moreau.
Here.
Counselor Bagley.
Here.
Counselor Lombardi.
Here.
Counselor Blaylock.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
And for the no public dialogue tonight, and for the invocation, I'd like you to hold two people in your heart tonight. First is William Gladhill Jr. Bill passed away over the weekend. He'd served on the EDC. He'd served on the planning board as well as the HDC. He gave a lot of his time to Portsmouth because he loved Portsmouth. And our condolences go out to his family. The other is to a former mayor of Portsmouth. Mary Keenan, she served as the assistant mayor and on the council for a number of years. She loved Portsmouth, and I know that because she was also my aunt. And our family lost our matriarch with the passing of Mary Keenan. And I would like you to hold her in your hearts as she is looking down, and I'm sure will tell me one way or the other if I vote right, as she would say. So a moment of silence for those two Portsmouth citizens. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next up, we have the acceptance of minutes, and we have a few. March 21st, April 4th, April 6th. I would look for a motion to move to accept and approve the minutes of those dates.
So moved.
Second, Your Honor.
All in favor.
Aye.
And next, something truly special for Portsmouth. Under recognitions and volunteer committee reports, we get to, we have under consideration, pretty sure this is going to pass, but consideration, naming of Connor's Cottage in recognition of lifelong resident, former mayor, and former Portsmouth Housing Director Timothy Ted Connors. Sample motion, move to suspend the rules in order to bring forward item 11A dot 3, naming of Connor's Cottage.
So moved.
Second.
I guess we need a roll call vote for the suspension.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Taber.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Moreau.
Yes.
Counselor Bagley.
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi.
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Mayor McCacklin.
Yes.
Unanimous.
And then the naming of Connor's Cottage. Entertain a sample motion, move that the city is in accord with the request of the Cottage Senior Housing Limited Partnership to rename the former 1895 building at the municipal complex, Connor's Cottage, and to erect appropriate signage to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
And I would like to request of the audience, if there is an opportunity to, before we take our vote, and again, I think this is a sure thing, but I would like to hear, if there's anybody in the audience that unusually would like to speak on this motion. I'd like a further suspension of the rules to welcome the audience to speak on behalf of this agenda item.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call vote for that.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Taber.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Moreau.
Yes.
Counselor Bagley.
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi.
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Mayor McCacklin.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Now, if there's anybody in the audience, please raise your hand and come up to the podium, and we see Craig Welch. Well, that's a tall order, Ruth.
Nobody ever speaks for Mrs. Griffin, so I'm honored for that. Thank you, Mayor and Council. For almost 70 years, the Portsmouth Housing Authority has been building affordable housing in the city of Portsmouth. The PHA is the largest landlord in the city with 644 rental units under management, and the PHA is the largest housing authority per capita in the state of New Hampshire. Over these years, tens of thousands of Portsmouth citizens have benefited from the housing that we provide, and the one person that has been the most influential in this is Ted Connors. Ted's list of contributions to this city is long, but there is no better measure of a man than the family that surrounds him. And Ted's tribe is exceptional in every way. Here today is Ted's wife Liz and their children, and with their spouses, Annalise and Richard, and Tim and Tanya, and together with their nine exceptional grandchildren that you see in front of you. And my name is Craig Welch. I'm the executive director of the Portsmouth Housing Authority. I have had the pleasure of sitting in the same seat, formerly occupied by Ted, in a building that Ted built 50 years ago, the Margeson Apartments. When Ted was elected mayor of Portsmouth at the age of 26, he was the youngest serving mayor in the United States. This began a long career of public service for Ted, earning admiration from the people of Portsmouth all the way to the White House. In the years following Ted's election as mayor and as the director of housing and the executive director and a board member, the PHA would build hundreds of units of housing throughout the city. Ted was not only a leader in developing affordable housing, but also in historic preservation. Portsmouth Urban Renewal Projects were the first in the nation to include a historic preservation component. And in 1996, Ted led the preservation of the former Atlantic Heights School, which was turned into 30 units of senior housing, and repeated this in 2010 when the Lafayette School was saved from demolition and turned into 10 units of senior housing. As recently as 2016, as a member of our board, Ted was the one that championed the development of the 64-unit Ruth Lewin Griffin Place, which will open just six weeks from now, nearly 50 years after Ted started this journey. And along with the preservation of the two schools, Ted presided over the preservation of the abandoned and the quickly deteriorating Cottage Hospital, built in 1895 and included in the National Register of Historic Places in 1996. Turning this property into 20 units of senior housing was an enormously ambitious undertaking. But ever the optimist, the hardworking and persistent Ted Connors persuaded the city to lease the building to the PHA and let us have at it. When it opened in 2003 in honor of decades of service to the city, the PHA appropriately named the building the Connor's Cottage, and we've referred to it as Connor's Cottage for the 20 years since. So the reason I'm here today is to request that the city do something that's long overdue and officially join us in naming Connor's Cottage Connor's Cottage. In 2003, it was explained to the city that only the city council could change the name of city-owned property. We are the lessee of this property, of this property and the Lafayette School, and that this action was only taken after the namesake was deceased. Obviously, that policy has changed since, evidenced by the Herald White House Bridge, the Lister Academy, and Behanko Gateway Park and others. Lister Academy, that's still true, right? Bob's still with us. It's great. So for this reason, on behalf of the PHA, the Connors family and my family personally, I respectfully request that the city formally name the 1895 Cottage the Connor's Cottage and accommodate new signage, including replacing the granite sign that currently says Portsmouth Cottage Senior Housing to carry the name Connor's Cottage. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Is there anybody else that would like to speak before we vote? Seeing no other hands, I would simply like to thank Ted. You've been a friend to Portsmouth for an incredibly long time, even when you go hang out in other towns and help them out. You've been, you've always been, I think, thinking of Portsmouth, living as we would hope all our citizens do. This is a very small token of our appreciation as a city. But as people reflect on the name Connor's Cottage, I hope it brings to them the understanding of the dedication and belief you had in our city in housing, much before it's been front-page news, now seemingly on everybody's mind. You've been advocating it for a much longer time, and I am grateful as a city council that we get to right this wrong and to put your name on this building. It is well deserved. So with that, I'd like a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Taber.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Moreau.
Yes.
Counselor Bagley.
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi.
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Mayor McCacklin.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you all very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's a great honor to be here, especially with my wife Liz and the kids and the grandchildren that are here tonight. It's a great honor and a great privilege, and I love the city. It's been very kind to me, and I hope I can give back a lot more. But this is a great honor for me and City Manager. Thank you so much for your work on this. I really greatly appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ted. Now, next up, we have public comment. I have the lists here. And just remember, as I go through, you have about another three minutes to raise your hand on Zoom. We will take you after. I ask that residents go first. First up, we have both Bob Lister and Tom Coffold on the topic of a bench dedication.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I was always told not to follow, when you speak, not to follow children or Ted Connors. So I'm going to break my own rule. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, City Manager, my name is Bob Lister. I live at 69 Diamond Drive. Tom Coffold is here with me this evening. He will also speak briefly. We want to invite you to two dedications of benches in the city, one at the high school, one in downtown Portsmouth, for Charlie Howard, who was a student and a resident in Portsmouth. He was a graduate of Portsmouth High School in 1980. He was a student of mine for many years. And he was, didn't attend graduation, but he went to Bangor. And unfortunately, because of intolerance, he was murdered in Bangor. So we have some bench dedications that we'd like to invite you to and the community, and hope that you will attend. And I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Assistant Mayor and councilors. My name is Tom Coffold. I'm at 53 Roger Street here in Portsmouth. I founded the Seacoast LGBT History Project in 2015 to preserve, collect, and present the history of the LGBT community in Portsmouth. While we were doing research, we learned a lot more about Charlie Howard and how, for example, his grave in Kittery, where he's buried, was unmarked because his parents were afraid that the stone was going to be defaced. And we wanted to really do something for his hometown. Bangor had a great memorial for him, and they do a yearly memorial service for him. So really, we wanted to do something to honor him as well. So we approached the city and the school board, and we got permission to put a bench downtown and a bench at the high school. The downtown bench is in Commercial Alley, and thank you to the DBW for reconfiguring some of the brickwork so it'd fit there. And the high school one, it's in the Oval. And we're working with the GSA at the high school. They'll be doing most of the work, and they want you to join them at the high school on June 1st, beginning of Pride Month, at 4:00 PM at the high school to dedicate the bench. And we would love to have you join us downtown on July 11th, that's a Monday, at 6:00 PM at North Church. We'll be doing a little memorial service, and then we'll be walking over to the bench and placing some roses on it in memory of Charlie. So we hope you all will be able to attend to honor Charlie. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Bob. Next up, we have Arthur Clawe on the topic of meaningful proclamations.
Good evening. Arthur Clawe, 431 Pleasant Street. When I heard the Proclamation for Sexual Abuse Awareness Month, it brought back a number of painful memories as having been a victim of sexual abuse as well as a frustrated victim's advocate. The proclamation stated that it was created to ensure that citizens are better prepared to advocate for sexual assault victims and for reforms. As an advocate, I have seen that institutions often shame and cover up sexual harassment and sexual assault. When I spoke at the city council meeting in June of 2014, I stated the following. I'm calling on the stewards of the city and the unions to stand up for employees. At a recent public event, an underling was accosted by a senior officer in the city. It was witnessed by a number of people. We had heard the rumors for years, and now it's happened in public. To those who are victims of sexual harassment, sexual assault within our system, we should have zero tolerance. If you go back and try to find that meeting, which was in June of 2014, this is what you'll find in the minutes. Arthur Clawe said that anyone using an electronic device during this meeting is violating the right-to-know law. He also addressed employee pensions, no mention of what I said. But from the Portsmouth Herald, just after I spoke, it said, "City Attorney Bob Sullivan Tuesday said he didn't have the slightest idea what Clawe was talking about, but said if Clawe brought specific allegations forward, they would be investigated." Sullivan said the city had not received any complaints from anyone concerning what Clawe described. Deputy Police Chief Corey McDonald referred all questions to Sullivan. Years later, the following was found in a demand letter from a female police officer to the city of Portsmouth. At a benefit dinner occurring in Portsmouth, New Hampshire on or about January 12th, 2013, Deputy Chief McDonald exclaimed that he was the effing deputy chief, "whereupon he reached out and grabbed my right breast, reflecting a discriminatory belief that if a male police official of lesser power than he could touch a female officer's breast," referring to a 2007 incident, "then he should be able to do the same." In 2022, I received a legal memorandum, which originated from Attorney Sullivan, showing that the complaint had been settled in February of 2014, four months before I got up and described what had happened. Four months, when he said that he had no idea what I was talking about. I'm extremely doubtful that amnesia can be blamed, but I conclude that the city attorney and his staff will throw under the bus any whistleblowers against sexual harassment and assault within the ranks of city employees. It's time for an honest change, and I challenge the council to honor the proclamation that you all agreed to just two weeks ago and replace the institutional people who enable sexual assault among the employees of the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you, Arthur. Next up is Mark Brighton on the topic of ethics.
Mark Brighton, South Mill Street. The city's current use of the ethics complaint process is corrupt. In the previous council, Counselor Taber used the ethics complaint process to crucify Counselor Esther Kennedy. In this council, Mr. Taber has colluded with the mayor and city attorney to prevent the complaint process from even happening. Mr. Taber has revealed, Mr. Taber, you revealed confidential information in a public meeting. That is an ethics violation, full stop. As early as 2014, the New Hampshire Municipal Association sent the city a letter stating that portions of the ethics ordinance dealing with the breach of confidentiality was a mess. My words, not theirs. Did the city do anything with the recommendations? Apparently not. It's still a mess. Now, most importantly, Mr. Taber, let's get back to you. Reporter McMenamy wrote a story for the Portsmouth Herald covering the dismissal of your ethics complaint. Mr. Clawe and I contributed many sage comments. Now, reporter McMenamy is many things, but stupid is not among them. In every story he does, if there are two sides, he presents both sides or states one side was not available for comment. From this absence of any of our comments, the only possible conclusion is that editor Howard Altschiller protected you, a friend and former boss, and deleted our comments. That is blatant censorship by the fourth estate. Darkness dies in, I'm sorry, democracy dies in darkness. And this city has just gotten very dark, and there is a chill wind blowing. Mr. Taber, one of your comments that made the paper was, "This complaint has been rejected, so we can all move on, I hope." In the words of the great Italian philosopher Yogi Berra, "It ain't over till it's over. One way or another, we will drag your sorry self to Superior Court."
Thank you, Mark. Next up is Kelly Weinstein on the topic of community campus field turf.
What a lovely tribute to the Connors family. I didn't think I was going to need tissues at a city council meeting, so bear with me. Good evening. My name is Kelly Weinstein, Lincoln Avenue. I have two middle school athletes. I'm here to advocate for turf fields at the community campus. My kids are currently practicing lacrosse in Newington, or they would have been here with me tonight to share in the sentiment that Portsmouth needs more turf fields for our athletes. In addition to playing on non-turf fields in Newington, they practice in Greenland and Rye. Last year, our middle school field hockey team was relegated to the field, if you could even call it that, behind the library, next to the Connie Bean. It was unmoed and full of divots. Many of these kids had never played field hockey before. It reminded me of that movie, The Sandlot, if you've seen it. It was nothing short of miraculous that they came back day after day to practice and learn the sport in such poor conditions. Playing on turf regularly and consistently is key to athletic development and success, and will undoubtedly contribute to the development of our town's athletic reputation. While I know it's really difficult to arrange for all sports to get equal playing time on the high school turf, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that on one of the very few times we were scheduled to have a game on the turf, at the very last minute, we were moved to the grass behind the stadium, and then the boys' soccer team took the turf field. It was devastating to the girls, who were so excited to finally play on the turf. They had practiced daily for their games, and throughout the season They had practiced daily for their games and throughout the season in the same way that every other athlete did, in even more challenging circumstances, to be honest. To miss that opportunity was a huge disappointment in their season. So I feel as if Portsmouth has the opportunity here with the community campus development to rival other districts and other private schools that have better athletic facilities and turf fields. My family currently travels over an hour each way multiple times a week to practice with their club on one of the top turf fields in the Northeast. After asking several of the kids in our neighborhood and in our district to have left both Portsmouth Middle School or Portsmouth High School what their reasons were, I'm hearing over and over again, it's because of the sports facilities and turf time. We're in the same situation, too. So I would love to ensure collegiate sports participation, which is directly influenced by turf time. It will definitely guarantee our athletic confidence, skill development, and it will contribute to our town's positive athletic reputation. Please consider the future of our athletes here. Consider more turf fields at the community campus. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks.
Next, we have Rick Beckstead on the demolition committee.
Sorry, I have to keep switching glasses. Getting used to it, though. Good evening, Rick Beckstead, 1395 Islington Street. Approximately about six weeks ago, I had actually come to the council and talked about a demolition committee. Now, the demolition committee is something that is set in stone. I'm holding my Bible, which is the ordinance book, and in Chapter 14, I believe it is, it talks about, and I could be wrong with the 14. No, it is. So it is Section 14, or it is, excuse me, just for one minute. So it is the Section 14.201, and it's the purpose and intent of what the demolition committee was all about. The last meeting that took place on this committee was April of last year, on the 29th. There were recommendations that were made there, and they had never been fallen through. I apologize for, I guess, missing under my radar while I was still in office. This was something that was desperately needed. The demolition review committee is a committee appointed by the city council and comprised of five members of the following. One member of the HCC, which was John Wyckoff at that time, and still serves as chair and probably would be the one that would fill that spot. One member from the planning board, planning board actually was Councilor Monroe at that time. I would go and make the recommendation that Rick Chellman would be suitable for that position. We had one from the Portsmouth Historical Society, which was Ms. Ward, Barbara Ward it was, and she still is there, where she would be familiar. We still have Nick Cracknell, who also was on that committee and board, along with Robert Massilius, which is not, which would be our inspector. This is something that is needed. It's not something that can be ignored. It's been six weeks. I've been told that there is actually now a third building that is coming into Portsmouth as far as with demolition. We need to act on this. Councilman Monroe can give you the background if you need it, along with some of the other members that were there. It was problematic. It needed to be able to make some changes. There were good recommendations that came out of there, and I would strongly suggest that we look at going and doing this sooner rather than later, because while we sit where we sit, basically, it falls by the wayside. There'll be grandfather on the old standards, and the old standards, there were loopholes and problems, and we need to go and address those sooner rather than later. And I'm going to ask this council, who has prized itself on being able to right some wrongs, to be able to go and finish this. And then, just on a short note, I would like to recognize, I called Mayor McCacken over the weekend when I had learned that William Gladhill had passed away. William Gladhill was something that can never be described or touched. That man served as a representative on the planning board, and he was a representative on the planning board that served on the HCC. He was the last member in our community to do such a position, and it is an upheld position that William took great pride in what he did as far as investigating each one of the applications. And I know I might go over a second, but literally, this man went above and beyond. He was the last. I would like to see that return maybe sometime, but that's asking an awful lot. But the Gladhill family has been here forever. William Gladhill will be sorely missed in this community, and maybe some other kind of recognition when it comes time, because he will, he will sorely be missed here in Portsmouth. I know that a lot of people here loved and adored him, as did I did. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Rick. Next up, we have Bill Downey with the subject of McIntyre. Is Bill here?
He's coming.
Sometimes he hangs out.
Condolences, Mayor. I thought you handled yourself quite well last week under difficult situations. I thought you handled yourself with grace, and I think it's one of my admirable qualities, so I want to acknowledge that. I think one of the reasons why myself and others invoke your great dad is because he embodied these attributes that we seldom see. There's plenty of good lawyers. They're smart. They're cunning. But seldom you see someone who has a civic-centric attitude, is in good faith. That's what separated him. And I have to say, from my personal experience, since sitting in that second row in 2016, June 26th, the first McIntyre meeting, that, that pales in contrast to the qualities I just described. The lack of transparency, the secrecy, as Jim Splain had mentioned in his column, have been just too prevalent. And as you know, I've been involved since 2016. That's a long haul, but I'm passionate about this. We've lost a lot of our integrity, historic integrity, on the North End. It's like having, you know, frostbite in your arm. This is our heart. This is the center of our being. That's why it matters. It's my neighborhood, too. So there's a bias. But it's worth this fight. And I believe that this new agreement is very unfortunate because it fails to protect the citizen. And that's, you know, Law 101 for contract law. One of the most important features we had in the original agreement, which is horrible, it's horrible, but there are several outs. Councilor Denton, I recall you acknowledged my comments about a month ago. Appreciate that. That's been plugged up. Now, there's no say for you, representing us, if you like the form of the ground lease. That's a big misstep. It really exposes us to unnecessary financial expenditures, which you all know about. And I think there's been a narrative that I respectfully vehemently disagree that we're exposed to tens of millions of dollars. Now, I heard Mr. Sullivan say back in February 14th, in regard to that challenge on the messaging of the rescinding vote, which, as your dad would say many times, everyone has the right to protest the government. So I disagree with him, but I respected it. Mr. Sullivan, you said, "We were going to mount a vigorous defense." Right on. Good for you. But I didn't see that, and I haven't heard about the McIntyre, if I may. And my concern is, the advice, I haven't earned anything from Mr. Conley. I know your position, but I think it is a red herring, and I think Red Gate Kane played a very bad hand well, and I'm concerned for our exposure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Page two and page three. No more, no speakers on Zoom, so with that, we will move on.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yes, I'd like to.
Oh, we have to, a motion to suspend.
A motion to suspend the rules. Bring forward item 13B, presentation by Paul Breen, the executive director of P's Development Authority.
Second? And just as soon as Kelly catches up with all these notes, we will have a roll call. Oh, you're the last person I'll apologize about anything in this room.
Okay. Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Yes.
Councilor Taber.
Yes.
Councilor Denton.
Yes.
Councilor Monroe.
Yes.
Council Badley.
Yes.
Council Lombardi.
Yes.
Council Blaylock.
Yes.
Council Cook.
Yes.
Mayor McCacken.
Yes.
unanimous?
Mr. Breen, look forward to the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. I'd like to thank Council Lombardi for inviting me to provide a historical perspective of the P's Development Authority. I am Paul Breen. I'm the executive director of P's, and I would like to give you a historical background. Many of you know this background, but for some of the newer councilors, it may be worthwhile. It ultimately gets you up to speed on the current status of the P's Development Authority, Portsmouth International Airport, and address any potential development that's out there. Thank you, Karen. So the history of P's. It was a full Strategic Air Command Base up until 1991. It was the first BRAC closure. About 300 bases throughout the world were closed under the Base Realignment Closure Act. As early as 1990, we started to see the drawdown of the base. There was approximately 6,000 people tied to that base. About 4,500 were specifically airmen and women enlisted at the base, and there was approximately another 2,000 that were civilian, civil service-type positions. And ultimately, the state of New Hampshire recognized immediately the economic impact that the base closure was going to have, not only on the seacoast, but on the state. So what that ultimately did was, the state established the P's Development recommission, the P's Redevelopment Commission, which ultimately looked at, what are we going to do with this economic impact of the closure? The Redevelopment Commission did a comprehensive redevelopment study, and ultimately, they identified that the best, the best path forward was, was a fee simple transfer, a public benefit transfer to the state. So essentially, Karen, if you could just flip the next slide, essentially, the 3,000-acre parcel was determined to be given up to the state of New Hampshire in a property transfer. Approximately 2,600 acres ended up coming over to the state. About 600 of those remained with the, with the base, which would ultimately serve the New Hampshire Air National Guard in a direct lease with the Department of Defense. The New Hampshire Air National Guard still operates at P's as the squadron, the 157 Squadron, the refueling fleet. A key element of the planned transfer was an operation of a public-use airport. We basically signed a prenuptial agreement with the FAA and the DOD that, here you go, you can have these, this acreage to develop, to create an economic system for the airport to be viable for the long term. So essentially, we identified that we could do aeronautical and non-aeronautical with FAA oversight of the property. Ultimately, the state created through RSA 12G, recreated, created the P's Development Authority, and we, we became the steward of the property, and it was the creation of P's International Trade Port. To be clear, the PDA is a state entity. As part of that original 12G legislature, there was a comprehensive redevelopment study completed in 1990. 1991 was a very busy year with the trade port. We got the completion of the Federal Facilities Agreement, which basically was an agreement between the Environmental Protection Agency, the US Air Force, and the state of New Hampshire, which decided to identify what, what the property would become. In '91, we received our final environmental impact statement, and specifically, this contemplated the future use of the facility and what developments would be appropriate long-term. In 1991, we also signed probably the most significant contract that I deal with daily is the Joint Use Agreement between the United States, the Air Force, the P's Development Authority, and the state of New Hampshire that identifies our joint-use activity with the New Hampshire Air National Guard. The economic challenge that we have at the airport is unresponsible to provide the infrastructure on the airfield and the airport so that we can operate the mission of the military. That creates economic, that is dependent on economic revenue that we have to bring in via the trade port in aeronautical commercial activity. We call it a closed fiscal system. The money that we, we create from our, from our trade port and from commercial services of the airport go in and ultimately support the mission of the New Hampshire Air National Guard. In 1991, the PDA adopted its land use controls. We serve as our planning, planning board, and ultimately, we created our zoning map, which identified aeronautical zones and non-aeronautical zones. We utilize those to this day, and some of you are very familiar with those that have served on our technical review committees for potential development. In '92, the FAA also identified the airport's ultimate airport layout plan, which is a critical planning tool in airport development and community, community development. Next slide. Also, in '92, we had the supplemental directive decision for the base disposal and the reuse. Ultimately, identified what the future may, may hold in a line that this is the path that we wanted to go as far as the Air Force needs, the state's needs, and the FAA's needs. We inked the original master lease between the Air Force and the PDA, which basically provided the mechanism for us to be able to develop the property. In '93, we, we came to the city and devised the wastewater and water service agreement between the PDA. It was amended in 1997, and we still honor that agreement today. In '95, we went deeper into a comprehensive airport master plan that focuses more on aeronautical activity and commercial viability down the road, and how we can get to a path of being a sustainable, long-term airport. In '98, the municipal service agreement between the P's Development Authority and the city of Portsmouth was ratified in town of Newington, and we still honor that, that current agreement today. In 1999, it was a little bit later than the original trade port, but we, we worked on, on a path forward with the former Air Force golf course. That is now the P's Golf Course. That fee transfer went through, and we currently operate it. We utilize the, we call it non-aeronautical revenue from that facility that supports ultimately the airport and commercial operations at, at the field. In 2001, New Hampshire asked P's Development Authority to take general administrative oversight of the Division in Ports and Harbors. We provide general administrative oversight, and it also bodes well with our goal of economic development, and we collaborate very effectively on trying to be a port of maritime and, and air commerce. In '03 and '05, we finalized the free transfers, and all the property had become over to PDA and was finalized. To be clear on a couple points, the New Hampshire Air National Guard property is not part of the trade port. That is a direct lease from the Department of Defense to the New Hampshire Air National Guard. That is ongoing, and as I mentioned, that's approximately 600 acres that they occupy. The National Wildlife Refuge at the end of Aubriedum Drive in Newington, that is a direct land transfer from, from the, from the DOD to the Parks Bureau. That's not PDA land. It is national, national wildlife. P's is often cited as the most successful BRAC closure redevelopment in the country. Just a week ago, I spoke to Topeka, Kansas, that asked, "How do you do it? How did you make such a successful, successful repurpose of an outdated military facility?" I usually get a call about every six months from another facility that's asking, "How do you do it? How do you get this revenue? How do you get businesses to come to your facility?" And it's a great story, and I'm very grateful for my predecessors and the foresight that the city of Portsmouth and the town of Newington had to, to work on, on identifying a long-term viable use of the airport. The PDA itself, the PDA is governed by a Board of Directors with seven members appointed to three-year terms as follows. The governor and council, they elect the chair, which is currently Steve Dupree, who attended his first meeting next, next week, this week, I'm sorry. Senate president appoints, appoints a member. Speaker of the House, Tom Farini sits in that, that chair right now. City of Portsmouth, Eric Anderson is the city rep. Town of New, Newington is Margaret Lamson. The town of Newington and town of Greenland, that's new, that's a shared position. Greenland wanted a little seat at the table, and we were able to successfully get them representation, and Susan Parker handles that position. And finally, the Stratford County delegation and governor and council, Steve Forney, is the appointee for Stratford County. PDA Board of Directors hires the executive director. I've been in that capacity since 2020. Prior to that, I, I served as deputy director and the airport director. My staff includes finance, engineering, legal, human resources, maintenance, airport operations, and golf course. In all, we have a staff of about 42 full-time people, and seasonally, that changes. If you can imagine, airfield snow removal over hires in the winter, golf course summer over hires in, in the summer, and Division in Ports and Harbors over hires in, in the summer, busy active season. Division in Ports and Harbor staff also falls under the PDA umbrella. We support them administratively, and they're entitled to our resources that we have in the company. PDA staff works closely with the city of Portsmouth, staff including police and fire. Incredible relationship with, with both chiefs, Public Works, Mr. Rice, and the Economic Development Team, and we wish farewell to Nancy Comer, and we look forward to working in the future. Next slide, please. So where's So where things stand today? So, Pies Development Authority operates the Portsmouth International Trade Port, Portsmouth International Airport at Pies, Sky Haven Airport, which is a small general aviation facility up in Rochester, New Hampshire, Pies Golf Course, and the Division in Ports and Harbors, the Portsmouth, the Rye Harbor, and Hampton facilities. The PDA enters in, our business model is basically very much demanding on ground leases. The PDA enters into long-term ground leases with developers and businesses that essentially rent the lease, lease the land from us, they build the building, and they sublet out or use the facility. Both aeronautical and nautical and non-aeronautical uses are there. The developer usually owns the buildings that they construct, and we simply have ownership of the property and the steward, and that's our primary goal of allowing the airport to be self-sustaining, is that ground lease revenue. In some limited instances, mostly outdated Air Force buildings, we own the actual building and PDA leases directly to a tenant. Next slide. We've successfully developed approximately 5 million square feet of commercial industrial space. Next slide, please. Our flagship tenants are Lonza, Sig Sauer, Win Waste Innovations. At the Trade Port, we have 250 companies. We employ 10,500 employees that go directly to the Trade Port. We believe another 5,000 to 6,000 people work indirectly off Trade Port but support the firms on the Trade Port. Next slide, please. We contribute $700 million estimated annual wage basis. I think that's actually a little bit low. We're probably more to the tune of almost $750 million in wages paid to our Trade Port employees. $16 million in estimated business profit tax, room and meals taxes to the state, and $7.5 million we contributed to the City of Portsmouth through our Municipal Service Agreement in 2021. Our current vacancy rate at the Trade Port is 2.3%. The folks that envisioned this were somewhat, I'll say, were somewhat guarded in what types of businesses they wanted on the Trade Port years ago, and their ultimate goal was to create jobs and be recession-proof. I can tell you through the pandemic, we fared very well as far as not losing tenants. The only real, unfortunately, the only real vacancies that we saw were related to academia. Most of the academia on the Trade Port was related to professional service, professional growth, master's programs, certificate programs for the working professional. Unfortunately, that model went completely online, so we did see some of our satellite academic institutions vacate the Trade Port. We're happy to report that Great Bay Community College is in good standing, that student population has to come on campus and do hands-on training, so we're happy to see that coming back. But ultimately, we only have about 120,000 square feet of vacancy in the existing buildings that are at the Trade Port. Next slide. What do we have left remaining to develop? On the commercial industrial Trade Port side, we only have four parcels, approximately 28, I will tell you. The easy parcels have been developed. The remaining parcels in the Trade Port are somewhat of a challenge, but we look forward to seeing what is possible out there. On the aeronautical side, or the air side we call it, we have 10 parcels that total about 120 developable acres. What we've seen lately for new construction is mostly office space. Specifically, the building on the left is 90 Aberiedum Drive in Newington. It's a 72,000 square foot facility. It welcomes Win Innovations, it's their new home, it's a mass timber office building made out of a mass timber frame beams of wood. It's a LEED certified building, it's an incredible facility, and we love the fact that they are in a hiring surge at Win. 67 Corporate Drive, that's a Wentworth Douglas facility, 60,000 square feet of health and hospitals. Next slide, please. 120 Corporate Drive, that's 25,000 also built, 25,000 square feet also built by Wentworth Douglas. They call it their Building C, also Health and Hospital Services. And 160 Corporate Drive might be my favorite story of all. It's 46,600 square feet of office and manufacturing, and that is a company called Galvion. They decided to come to Portsmouth because they are going after the graduate of Great Bay Community College's composite manufacturing program. I think it's an incredible story, it's a competitive market to lure a tenant like that, and what a great story when you have the folks going to school, to college, that are ultimately going to be hired and do the manufacturing on the Trade Port. Next slide, please. So Portsmouth International Airport at Pies specifically. Well, we're a public use airport. We're open to the public, we're subject to FAA oversight, not only in the original public land transfer back in the 90s, but also whenever we take a grant to do, when they purchase a snowplow for us, when they pave our runway, and we receive what we call airport improvement grants. We have federal grant obligations that we have to adhere to, and we have to operate the facility to those conditions. Primarily, we can't be exclusive, we're nondiscriminatory, and we have to welcome all types of aeronautical activity. We're in Nippius Airport, that's a significant achievement. There's only approximately 3,000 Nippius airports. They're in the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems, and essentially, the FAA has recognized that this facility is a commercial airport that serves the US citizens in the greater e-commerce that is needed within the international system. We're proud of that. We're geographically located with a lot of what we would call very close, much busier airports, and we take a lot of burden off of the system for the FAA. Next slide, please. These are just a highlight of some of our active tenants and operators at the airport. There's basically an eclectic group there, anything from an operator that's flying a very small, single-engine airplane to a major Boeing 747 that's delivering cargo and charter activity. I'm sure everyone is aware of our Pies greeter troop activity. Well, we have that activity on a daily basis, and we're geographically in a very good position to support the missions that go on throughout the world. Next slide, please. So what we've seen recently at the airport is, and throughout the country, is there is an incredible interest in aeronautical growth right now. Specifically, new corporate hangars for corporate aircraft. What we've learned through COVID is that first-class cabin in the old legacy air carriers, that demographic is still traveling, they're just doing it in more of a NetJets, Flexjet type corporate aircraft. There's a need to base those aircraft, there's a need to repair those aircraft, there's a need to dispatch those aircraft, and there is a demand on the, throughout the country for those types of facilities. Specifically, we see an uptick in interest at Pies. We've seen an increase in our commercial air service development. Allegiant is our only carrier, and historically since 2012, we've seen about a 20,000 employment jump, which is significant in their demand. It continues to grow, with the exception of 2020 and the pandemic, we've seen a steady uptick, and really, a lot of airlines are starting to realize that there's an economical incentive, an environmental incentive for going into a secondary airport. And existing tenants now all have growth plans within them that we think are realistic. For instance, PlaneSense would like to, one of our largest tenants and employers, would like to increase their facility, and the demand is there. Their fleet model is growing, and they need to house those aircraft at Portsmouth. Specifically, we've seen an interest in potential air cargo development. Increased demand for facilities nationwide. Basically, the supply chain has changed. Consumer goods are being put out to the world in a different way. I will tell you that air cargo is very different. There's an extreme variety of types of air cargo. They come in propeller planes, they come in jumbo jets, they come in once a week, or they come in multiple times a day. Ultimately, it's a very vast array of what activity can take place, and like our air service commercial, I think we'll identify that the right fit will eventually find Portsmouth. We also must recognize that there's airfield limitations at Pies. You can look at Pies on Google Maps, and it looks like there's a vast open array of landscape there. Well, there's simply not when we look at our other operations with our existing tenants, specifically the New Hampshire Air National Guard, and when we try to identify uses, we run out of places to actually park planes rather quickly at Pies. We also have limitations on our bulk fuel. We just simply can't support some of the narrative that's out in the public right now as far as complex or a hub. It simply just isn't feasible at Pies, and there's even limitations in some of our airfield navigational aids. So I will say to you that cargo is eclectic in many ways, and we're pretty confident that ultimately, when the due diligence is done on any potential development, the right fit will be in front of the PDA Board. Next slide, please. So where does that potential air cargo that you've seen out in the community being discussed now, where does that stand at Pies? In January 2020, we entered, the PDA Board approved two option agreements. Specifically, there's a parcel in Newington, which is a 40-acre parcel called North 40, and the other one is Midfield in Portsmouth. We call it Hangar 227. It's an outdated, very large, former military hangar. Developer wanted to do diligence to see if it's feasible to turn these into an aeronautical air cargo use. My expectation to get them in front of the Board with any type of proposal, they would have to do a large amount of due diligence, expend a lot of money, and ultimately, the FAA doesn't like us to provide exclusivity without a financial mechanism involved. So what we did is we entered an option agreement that basically, they're paying a percentage of the land lease and an option fee for a limited time, allowing them to do their due diligence, work with their consultants, do their GO survey work, start to market the facility to see if there's any need in the market, and ultimately, we'll see where that due diligence leads. But to be clear, as of this date, there are no air cargo proposals in front of the PDA Board at this time. When and if those proposals come forward, they will come to the PDA in a public meeting, in a public process, and it's my job to make sure that any presentation to my Board is worth their while, and I will do my due diligence with my staff to make sure that if a proposal comes out of these option agreements, they will have enough resources and enough substance behind them to be presented, and ultimately, the Board will allow them to make a decision. It is likely that any proposal that does come forward will be very different than the square footage involved in the option agreement. We ask them, if you're going to start to do your due diligence, we want to see the due diligence on the worst-case scenario as far as the square footage. Tell us what you have to work with, but we know that already, the due diligence is already calling for a much smaller footprint if anything comes before us. And finally, PDA Board will be actively engaged in review consistent with the 30 years of development at Pies. This is nothing new to us. Normally, an option agreement that we do with developers doesn't come out in a public format. It's usually approved in the public meeting, but it doesn't draw attention like we do. We feel that we've front-loaded the community very early on in the process, and ultimately, we'll see what comes back. We have a meeting on Thursday, and at this point, there's nothing on the agenda except for a simple staff update from me on the due diligence part.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you for your time, and I'm so grateful this coincided with Mr. Carner's recognition. He's just a great steward to Pies Development Authority, so thank you.
Would you be willing to take some questions from the Council?
Sure.
Sure. Are there Counselor Denton, Counselor Moreau, Counselor Bagley? All right.
Thank you, Your Honor. Other than Mr. Anderson being our representative when it comes to voting for or against any, I guess, contract, is there any role that the City Council plays?
So, potentially, if any of this involves land planning controls that will require a technical review, and depending on the location, if that's the case, City of Portsmouth would have representation in the technical review, depending on the location.
Thank you.
Counselor Moreau?
Do you have any general idea about timeframes as to when the due diligence period will end in actual, if something's going to go forward, when that will happen?
I do not. I can tell you that the option agreements were, the first option agreement is six months. If that option agreement gets extended, it has to go before the PDA Board for extension. Also, the option agreement fee is bumped up, and we usually don't go beyond three option extensions, so at max, the option would probably timeout around 180 days, but that would be speculative if the PDA Board approved it or not.
Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. A great presentation. I have a question on the vacancy rate of 2.3%. That's an astounding good number. Do you anticipate that it should stay low like that, or do you think people will vacate as their leases come up? Is there a feel on the...
So, to be clear, that number actually lags a little bit because essentially, we'll do a lease with the developer, and then they may sublease out the building. So, we're about six months behind the reporting on that, but we're told we're holding strong our subleases. We haven't had many vacancies, and the developers that we engage are saying that there's a very large demand for the facilities at Pies, and part of that is just the retrenchment from urban areas that companies want to be in the Granite State.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question that I keep receiving from residents of Portsmouth. I just want to clarify this. It's my understanding that the City of Portsmouth has no control over noise, or potential noise from any potential future development with regard to planes landing at Pies, and I just want to double-check that with you. My understanding is that that's entirely the FAA.
So, what we do is we work with our FAA noise program, and that is a tool for the community and the airport. We have a noise advisory committee that works closely, there's Portsmouth delegates on that, but it's my responsibility and my staff's responsibility to, we will listen to any noise reports, and it's our job to try to identify if there's any systemic issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Tabor?
Hi, Paul, good to see you.
Good to see you, John.
And I enjoyed being the Pies liaison in the past term. I know that the developers of the cargo operation, Procon and Kane, had a potential list of end users, and I think there's been a lot of speculation that the kind of freight would be needed tomorrow, has to arrive overnight type of freight involving night flights. Is that what you're seeing, or when you've looked at comparable warehouses around the country similar to what's proposed here, what kind of flight intensity have you seen? Is it daytime? Is it sort of a slow inventory replacement, or is it a rapid overnight type of thing?
So, with all due respect, everything would be speculative, but I can tell you, every entity that is in retail needs to figure out a way how to get a package on someone's doorstep. I do not believe that cargo in the new supply chain age consists of an overnight type of hub, that the express package has to be on the executive's desk by 10:30 in the morning. It's completely changed. So, anything would be speculative. There's a vast, a vast list of entities that may do this, and I will say, as the due diligence is being done, it's being recognized that potentially, there could be better aeronautical uses out there than potentially cargo itself.
Counselor Denton?
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Mr. Anderson for the updates that you send us.
Well, thank you, Paul. It's a pleasure to get to see you in Council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you for the update, and you know, it's understood, this Council, that the Pies, you know, serves the economic interests, but it's also, you know, a military installation, you know, should the United States government ever need, you know, that runway, that it exists, you know, perpetuity with that in mind as well. But appreciate the members that we have that serve the Board, both Eric and Tom, and everyone that serves the Board, you know, more broadly for Greenland and Newington, and please send along our best wishes and hope for a great new Chair there in Steve Dupree. We wish him all the best, and our doors are always open.
I will pass that along.
Doors always open, and the City has an open door for Steve, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilors.
All right. Now, do we have the Senate, bringing the Cemetery?
We could, if you like, Mayor.
Okay. Why don't we bring the Cemetery Committee presentation up, and then we will go through the, oh, wait a motion.
Motion to suspend the rules, or?
Yep.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
And then a roll call vote? And then a roll call vote?
13 and C.
Oh, yeah, doing, doing my job for him there.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McKequin?
Yes.
Is this Suzanne giving this presentation?
This gentleman right here. Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
My condolences, uh, Mayor, on the last of your, uh, Aunt Mary, read about her this week in the paper, and, uh, on behalf of the cemetery committee, just wanted to pass our sincere condolences.
Well, thank you very much.
My name's Chris Benesek. Just a brief introduction. First time I, uh, have the privilege of, of speaking to the council. Uh, I'm representing the Committee for Cemeteries, or the Cemetery Committee. I'm not exactly sure what our official name is because we're pretty new. And I think this may be the first formal, uh, presentation that we've had. Uh, I live at Seven Portwalk Place downtown. I moved here in 2019. Uh, I do have some ties to the area. Graduated from the University of New Hampshire, uh, uh, studied history and political science, uh, political science, and I've always been a, uh, amateur historian. So this was a, a project that I thought was a good way for me to get involved, you know, in the community up here and, uh, and to get involved. I never would have thought, my first visit to Portsmouth was, uh, as a UNH senior in 1990, that, uh, I'd be standing here today, uh, 30 years later, uh, doing a cemetery committee presentation, but here I am, so that's a little about myself. Can I go to the next slide? So, um, the cemetery committee i- is new, as I, as I said. We were formed, uh, the last administration as a blue ribbon commission. But when we met in October, our first, uh, task was to come up with a mission statement, and that's what it is, what we do. A real simple statement at a high level to restore, preserve, and safeguard Portsmouth's historic cemeteries and their history for future generations. Um, next, uh, it's a picture of Thomas Harvey's gravestone. One of the last Revolutionary War soldiers who was alive in Portsmouth, passed away in 1837. Uh, this is curious, since, uh, the name is familiar with Counselor Tabor here, so I, I had some questions, uh, when I, when I found this grave. Cemetery preservation, why is it important? Well, uh, it remembers lives that were once lived. Unfortunately, in life, uh, it all comes to an end for every living, uh, every living creature. Um, but, uh, everyone would like to be remembered, uh, I think. So cemeteries aren't, aren't just about, you know, there's bodies there, there's dead people, but there's stories about the people that lived that passed before us. So this, uh, headstone is at the Beck Tabor Family Cemetery, which is right behind the C and J, um, facility on Grafton Road. Uh, kind of overgrown, it's been cleaned up recently by somebody, which is nice. When I first went there, uh, it was really overgrown, but you can't see it, but on this gravestone at the bottom, there's this epitaph, um, very striking. You'll find that in a lot of gravestones in town and throughout New England from the early 19th century. It says, "Blooming youth, as you passed by, as you are now, so once was I. As I am now, so you must be. Prepare for death and follow me." So that, uh, parable is very, very telling. Most people, uh, immediately associate with, well, I'm gonna die and I'm gonna be in the ground. Um, but I think it's more important, what we're gonna talk about today, and this is what the mission is of the cemetery committee, uh, is to talk about, this was once a person. Um, the people who were interred in the cemeteries, the historic cemeteries in town, uh, walked around, built houses, fell in love, uh, worked, had children, um, and they have stories to tell, some more important than others, but all of them have a story to tell. Uh, and it's important for the, for the committee to recognize that and to pass those along to future generations. The council, is, was, is that a rela, is that some person related to you, Joe Tabor?
Uh, no, my ancestors came from Czechoslovakia in the 1870s and probably lost a syllable or two on the boat, so.
So no relation to that gentleman? Okay. Just curious. So the North Cemetery, so why is the North Cemetery important? And that's the first, um, uh, area that we're, that we're tackling as a cemetery committee. So why is that important? Well, I won't go through all this, but it was established in 1753, and it's just a fact, it's the largest coastal bearing ground north of Newburyport. Um, it has over four, four hundred graves and very interesting stories, as I, I was talking about earlier, that of the people that are buried there. Uh, it's a classic cemetery for 19th century, 19th century colonial burials. And what that really means is that graves are kind of scattered everywhere that. There's no family plots, uh, things weren't pre-sold, uh, the gra, uh, gravestones are all different, look different, made of different materials. Um, and people just, you know, when they died, uh, they were dropped off and buried and could have been buried next to a stranger. Um, at the North Cemetery as well, um, the gravestones tell a story, but, you know, I mean, they're carved, as you can see with this, by local and regional artisans who are very, very highly skilled in a craft that's no longer practiced anymore, you know, with a hand chisel and, and making these stones. And not only were they memorializing, uh, the person who died, but they would tell you a lot about what was going on in the time. Um, and they would also, uh, have carvings like the, uh, skull's head with the wings to convey the fears of the unknown to the living. Um, hope, you know, inspiration, dread, um, all kinds of things. Uh, this actually says, and this is really interesting, this is the greatest stone of Jacob Tilton, uh, who was a merchant in town. It says, "In peace, amidst the rage of noise and war, here lie the remains of Jacob Tilton." He died, uh, November 7th, 1776. So that tells you, um, what was going on at that time. That was the Revolutionary War, which was, uh, which was just raging. So just from that, you can get a sense of what was going on when he passed away at that time. Uh, next slide. Union Cemetery's area of significance is from roughly 1750 to the 1850s. Uh, by the 1850s, it was pretty full, and, um, the last burial in North Cemetery was in 1926, as I discovered. Um, but it, by 1869, it was already becoming a place of, um, uh, vagrants and was overgrown and wasn't really being taken care of. And I was surprised to see the articles in the Portsmouth Herald, starting in 1869, going all the way through the 60s and 70s, talking about, uh, disgraceful condition of the cemetery and the vandalism, everything that was going on there, and just, um, just kind of being disrespected and disgraced. Uh, that area, as you know, the North End, currently being redeveloped today, uh, was a residential area to probably the early part of the 20th century, became highly industrial. Um, and that also attributed to some of the neglect. For the North Cemetery, it's, uh, on the National Register of Historic Places. Uh, it's been there since 1978. And, uh, when I was researching, I looked at, I read the register. You know, I knew that there was famous politicians and soldiers and, uh, colonial, uh, people that were buried there. But what is really interesting is that the register notes, um, the diversity that the cemetery contains in terms of, uh, the first Jewish resident is buried there. Um, the first Catholic, Roman Catholic parishioner, early African-American residents, both free and enslaved. Not to mention important physicians, doctors. I mean, it's really incredible. So, uh, that story is really relevant to what the city is, is today, uh, from a, a diverse culture, an accepting culture. And as the North End of Portsmouth continues to redevelop, which is, uh, I think a great thing, uh, personally, but, uh, the North Cemetery is always gonna be right there, smack in the middle, and it's a jewel that really needs, uh, to be polished, protected, to maintain that significance. Um, and to tie new residents like myself and other people, uh, visitors that come in every day to the hotels, uh, to, to, to what Portsmouth is, why it is the city that it is today, and, uh, and its importance to the coun, country. Uh, next slide. So I just, uh, have a few, uh, highlighted, uh, graves that I wanted to talk about. John Langdon is the founding father of the United States. That's his tomb on the, uh, south side of the cemetery, about the train tracks. Uh, it's looked that way probably for about 150 years, covered with leaves that day. Um, you'd never know who's buried there, um, unless you did some research. Uh, this gentleman, uh, was born at the Urban Forestry Center, which is today, uh, on the farm over there in Owen. Was president of New Hampshire, a signer of the US Constitution, one of the first two US senators from New Hampshire, and, uh, governor of New Hampshire. He's probably the most respected man, uh, in the country, uh, in the late 18th century. Counted George Washington as a personal friend, Thomas Jefferson. And he turned down Jay Madison's request to be candidate, uh, for vice president, uh, in 1812, uh, to remain in New Hampshire as governor. Uh, and he passed in 1819. So probably one of the most important, uh, founding fathers, certainly in New Hampshire, and just missed by a month signing the Declaration of Independence as well. Uh, next slide. William Whipple. So he's an interesting character, um, and you can't talk about him, uh, without talking about Prince Whipple. A founding father, he signed the Declaration of Independence, uh, the second Continental Congress, was a general at the Battle of Saratoga. Uh, Prince Whipple, uh, who rests about 50 feet away from him, uh, today, uh, was his personal servant, enslaved servant, uh, and his bodyguard, uh, served with him, uh, at the Battle of Saratoga. Uh, in 1779, Prince and nineteen other enslaved Portsmouth men, and you've seen this on the Black Heritage Trail. Uh, I think the town's done a very good job of telling this story recently. Um, petitioned the General Assembly of New Hampshire for their freedom, uh, was not acted upon, and I was shocked to find this out, that New Hampshire didn't abolish slavery until 1857, one of the last states, uh, north of the Mason-Dixon line to do so. Uh, Prince was finally given his freedom by, uh, General Whipple in 1781. Uh, it didn't become legal until 1784. Prince and his wife Dinah, they lived on High Street, like right across the street from where the Hilton Garden Inn stands today. Um, and that was property given, uh, to them from the Whipple family and his will, uh, as, for his service. And they taught black children how to read and write, uh, for the remainder of their life, which, uh, um, was very rare back in then. So today, these two gentlemen, black and white, slave and master, uh, in life, uh, fly 50 feet apart in death. It's pretty, pretty interesting stuff. Abraham Isaac, who's the first Jewish resident of Portsmouth, migrated from Prussia, which is now Poland today. His gravestone, if you read it, uh, this is hard to read, but if you make it out, this talks about how highly esteemed and respected he was. He was a, uh, a son of, a loyal son of Abraham, it says on his grave. But it's very unusual to find Jewish citizens buried next to Protestants, uh, in colonial America. It's, uh, very, very rare, and we have that right in our backyard. Next slide. Uh, another story which has, uh, been brought recently, and there's been some articles, um, in the paper, and the Black Heritage Society, uh, recently put a plaque up over by North Church. Uh, it's Pop and Candice Spring were buried there, and those are their graves, um, in the segregated part of, of North Cemetery. Pop was born into slavery and kittery in 1766, uh, gained his freedom at some point, but, uh, was a farmer and earned enough money to buy a house in Portsmouth. And consider how rare that was, people just didn't own homes but a black person, uh, at that period in time, uh, buying a house. Opened a bakery next to the North Church and was just known, uh, throughout town as a very, uh, respected, jovial, uh, man, man about the town. Uh, and he was respected by both the white and black community, uh, before 1800. Uh, Pop became the president of the Portsmouth African Society. Um, and personally, out of his own pocket, uh, paid for many of the gravestones, uh, funeral expenses and costs of, of orphaned children, um, and assisted with them financially. So, uh, the Springs died four months apart in 1807. Next slide. And this one is really interesting for a variety of reasons, so I was doing, doing some research. Uh, Robert Reno. So he was born in Portsmouth, a large family, 1839, Irish family. Uh, in the 1850s, he moved to Boston with his parents and worked as a paper heiner, which is a wallpaper installer, uh, in Charlestown, Mass. Enlisted in the 29th, uh, Massachusetts Infantry Regiment at the start of the Civil War, and was part of the famed Irish Brigade, which was First Division, Second Corps of the Union Army. On September 17th, 1862, still, still today is the bloodiest day in US military history, the Battle of Antietam. Company H, uh, 29th Mass, uh, Mass Infantry Regiment, uh, charged the sunken road, the Confederate lines, uh, and he was one of nine, uh, in his unit killed on that day, shot through the forehead. Thirty-six hundred soldiers died that day, and he was one of them. Um, his body was returned by the old, uh, Boston Main Railroad to Portsmouth by his younger sister Martha, and he was interred in the cemetery, that's his grave. And, uh, she joined him just four years later at age 26, presumably from childbirth issues. We're not exactly sure, and that was besides him. So, um, what was really interesting about this is, uh, I lived in, uh, Charlestown, and when I, um, was researching this individual, found out I lived right across the street from where he used to live. 58 Sullivan Street in Charlestown, so, uh, very strange karma there. Next. So, um, the Headstone Cleaning Project. So May 7th, coming up pretty soon, 2022, uh, 9:00 AM to noon at North Cemetery in Maplewood Avenue. Uh, we're going to hold a, a Headstone Cleaning Project. Um, I'll be there. Susan Stare is our chairman, other, other people, uh, on the committee, um, will be there. We're anticipating about 15, 20 people, um, mostly people that we know, and we're gonna kind of go through the process of how to, how to clean these stones without causing any damage. And we're gonna, like, train the trainers. So members of the committee who haven't done this before, which I haven't either, uh, will kind of be supervised, will learn how to do the procedure, um, by these professionals, and we will then pass that along at future, um, sessions, because there's a lot of headstones in town and a lot of cemeteries. But the project work's gonna be supervised by Michael Griffin, who's sitting behind me. Uh, he's on the cemetery committee, and, uh, John Lord, who's well-known in the community, uh, the New England Old Graveyard Association. So they've, they've done a lot of this work, uh, it'll show a little bit about what they've done in the past. Uh, we're thankful for Peter Rice in the Department of Public Works, um, for stepping up and, um, working with Susan Woodland, who's, uh, kind of our city sponsor in the cemetery, cemetery committee. She's been great, uh, working with us, putting us in the right people and just figuring out the, you know, not the politics, but the, uh, mechanics of the city government. Peter Rice is going to supply the materials needed for the project. Once the funds have been, uh, distributed, we'll have a water, uh, tanker truck there, and parking spots on Cypher Volunteers will be reserved, blocked off on Maplewood Avenue, uh, make sure the traffic is in good shape. Next slide. So what is really in the process, what we do? So it's really simple. We use a biological solution. Uh, the brand name is called D2. Um, it's widely, uh, used in this, this type of work. Um, it's a neutral substance, it's biodegradable, contains no acids, salts, bleach, um, not hazardous, uh, doesn't require any special handling, protection, um, and it's safe to use around plantings, bushes, shrubs, trees. It's a very neutral pH, so, um, uh, it's pretty hazardous. It, it cleans a variety of things, but most importantly includes natural stone, um, marble, granite, limestone, et cetera. Uh, this grave right here is an example of a granite, uh, gravestone that is covered with algae and some lichens. So, uh, we'll, we'll use this picture, and once that's cleaned, we'll show you the after effects later. Uh, this gravestone is of Esther Mullenax, daughter of Prince and Diana Whipple, who I mentioned earlier, uh, who passed away in 1868, when the cemetery was in a pretty forlone and, uh, forlorn and desolate state. Volunteers will, uh, everything will be supplied by us, and they'll be using soft nylon or natural brushes to clean the stones. Next. Here's the example of the Headstone Cleaning. So this gravestone was cleaned in Harmony Grove Cemetery by Mr. Griffin, who's on the, uh, committee, and I know his family, uh, has been involved for quite some time in this type of work. But you see in the headstone, uh, the difference before and after, and this picture on the right is four years after the initial cleaning. So four years later, it's still in, uh, very pristine, uh, condition. And, um, I was talking to Michael earlier, and I was doing research, I noticed that in 1884, Michael's, uh, family was named the first superintendent of ci, of city cemeteries, uh, 148 years ago, so that's, that's really something. And the same name, Michael J. Griffin. So you're looking pretty good for grade. Next slide. So we thank you for your support and time, probably gone a little bit longer, but, uh, a lot of material to condense. Uh, if you're interested, um, look at any of the research, uh, there's a bibliography of sources that I consulted, and, um, again, really thank you for your support of this important project, and we look forward to providing you with- and we look forward to providing you with continued updates on the work that we do for the city.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Thanks.
It was, I was a history major myself, so I could've sat here all night and listened to that.
No.
But it was a testament to the type of volunteers that we have in Portsmouth, that you guys are putting this effort into helping us, you know, basically remember who we are, good and bad, and carry that on to future generations, so look forward to it. Hopefully, I'll check the schedule and the kiddos to see if I can sneak out from 9:00 to 12:00, that's right around the neck of the woods.
Yeah, I'd love to have you down there.
I'd love to, to come down. Are there, any questions?
You guys are all welcome, yeah. Any, any questions?
Well, between us and the Cemetery Committee, we got, you know, the 30 volunteers there pretty easily.
It's kind of like a friends and family event, the first one, you know, just so we can kind of, you know, kind of control things. My son is coming home, my youngest is coming home from college in Charleston, and he's a big history guy. It's at 9:00 AM, so it might be tough getting a 21-year-old out of bed, but thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. With that, I finally, I think I have to read out all these public hearings now, I think we've reached to the, to that point. So we do have some public hearings, adoptions of resolutions. The first is to authorize the city manager to apply for, accept, and expend the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 in the amount of $6,440,140, and zero cents, subject to the terms and conditions of the offer and rules and regulations pertaining thereto. Do we have a presentation on this?
Your Honor, I would just, by way of presentation, remind the council that the city received its first tranche of ARPA funding back in May of 2021, and we anticipate the same tranche within the next month or so. So to anticipate receipt, we thought it was most appropriate to bring this matter to the council at this time.
Are there any questions of, from the council? With that, I will open up to public hearing, any public hearing speakers that would like to speak on this Section A, on the ARPA funds. No public hearing speakers, second bite at the apple for the council, any questions? Okay, I will wait, a sample motion to move to authorize the city manager to apply for, accept, and expend the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 in the amount of $6,440,140, and zero cents, subject to the terms and conditions of the offer and rules and regulations pertaining thereto.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is an even longer resolution, much longer. Bear with me. Resolution appropriating $5,260,000 from American Rescue Plan Act ARPA grant to pay costs associated with the multipurpose fields, lighting, and related expenses at the Fields' city sidewalk reconstruction, citywide street paving, management and rehabilitation, Islington Street Phase II project, and the payment of costs incidental and related thereto. That $5,260,000 is appropriated to pay costs associated with the multipurpose fields, lighting, and related expenses at the Fields', citywide sidewalk reconstruction, citywide street paving, management and rehabilitation, Islington Street Phase II project, and for the payments of all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, up to $5,260,000 and no cents shall be utilized from the ARPA. That Resolution Number 14-2018, adopted by the City Council on July 9th, 2018, authorized borrowing by the city of up to $3,400,000 for the costs related to the construction of multipurpose recreation fields. The city will use ARPA grant funds on the unused balance of the borrowing authority in the amount of $560,000, which is hereby discharged and rescinded. That Resolution Number 14-2019, adopted by the City Council on July 15th, 2019, authorized borrowing by the city of up to $10,550,000 for the costs related to the city's street sidewalk upgrades, bridges, and facility improvements. The city will use ARPA grant funds on the unused balance of the borrowing authority in the amount of $2,400,000, which is hereby discharged and rescinded. That Resolution 17-2021, adopted by the City Council on August 2nd, 2021, authorized borrowing by the city of up to $13,300,000 for the costs related to the Prescott Park Master Plan Implementation, city street and sidewalk upgrades. The city will use ARPA grant funds of the unused balance of the borrowing authority in the amount of $2,300,000, which is hereby discharged and rescinded. Is there a presentation other than that long preamble?
Your Honor, I would just remind the council that we presented this, this funding scenario, if you will, at the April 4th council meeting. We held a public hearing and listening session on April 11th, and walked members of the public through this rationale, so at this time, we would just remind the council that instead of using bond authorization for these projects, we would think of better use and recommend the use of ARPA monies in their place.
Are there any questions from the council? Now, we did discuss this at the last meeting, but any further questions? Any questions from the public on this, or any comment in terms of any public hearing Any last questions? Okay. With that, I await the sample motion, move to the, move to adopt the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If I may, Your Honor, do we need a roll call vote because this is bonding? I think we need a, as long as unanimous, okay? Will that suffice in a voice vote?
You're, we're rescinding.
Good, good, thank you. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next up, it's not as long, but still not short. Resolution appropriating $10 million to pay costs of acquiring the community campus from the Foundation for Sea Coast Health, including the payment of costs incidental and related thereto. That $10 million is appropriated to pay costs of acquiring the community campus from the Foundation for Sea Coast Health, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet the appropriation, one, up to $1,576,179, and 30 cents shall be transferred from available funds, and that, two, the city treasurer, with the approval of the city manager, is authorized to borrow up to $8,423,820, and 70 cents under and pursuant RSA 33, the Municipal Finance Act, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore. That Resolution Number 26-2021, adopted by the City Council on December 20th, 2021, is hereby rescinded and of no further force or effect. Any further presentation on that?
No, Your Honor, just that the council would take the appropriate action and replace the, the money as, as outlined in the resolution.
Any questions of the council? Counselor Taber.
I just want to thank the city manager, City Manager Conard, for wisely seeing that the initial use of ARPA funds for the community campus might tie our hands in terms of housing or recreation, and these are, she's worked it out with her staff so that this is the same CIP money, just moving from one pocket to another, so that we have more flexibility, and kudos for that.
Thank you.
I echo those statements, any public hearing speakers? I see Petra Huda approaching. Petra, if you'd just remember to state your name and your address.
Petra Huda, 280 South Street.
And remember, you're not limited to three minutes, but as always, keep it in your heart and your head.
Okay, I'm really thankful that you all have the Part B in front of you, and what I'm gonna ask tonight is that you look at Part B, and then consider on Part C, the resolution rescinding the motion. So in Part B, every single one of those is described with a number, with the first bonding amount, and then the amount that will be used here. When we look at number C, the only thing it says is that Resolution 2621, adopted by the City Council on December, is hereby rescinded and of no further force and effect, which is very different than everything else we see here. So as I read this, I was trying to understand why this is different. So I started to go back, and I went back to the original resolution that was put forth on 2021 at the council meeting. And basically, it says, this was for appropriating $10 million for the cost of acquiring a community campus, and which will include a bond issue or notes of up to $3,250,000. And then at the bottom, it also said, as well as a bond issue or notes of up to $3,250,000. So my question is, why is this one here different than any of the other ones? And the, the next question is, I, I went back to see what was being said all along, and when I went back to the 4/4 council meeting on page four, this was described in, in, as the council meeting in December of the $3,250,000, and in the middle of the page, it says, in order to offset the increase in borrowing, so here we were being told we were gonna just increase it from $3 million to $5 million. So that would lead me to believe that we shouldn't have only been asking for $5 million more if we were doing this, but we're reversing the whole thing. So I went on to look at the fabulous presentation that was given to us by the staff on 4/11. In the middle of the page, it said, increase the borrowing authorization from $3 million to $8 million for the purchase. Again, that would, would have been $5 million. So my question is, why isn't this statement to rescind the same as the rest, which describes all of, all of the dollar amounts? And what it appears to be here is, this does, this is incomplete, because it doesn't tell you where it came from, the amounts, or actually what it's doing. So I guess I would ask, and I know you can't answer, but hopefully, before you vote on this, somebody will ask the same question, but it appears that this, this is insufficient to, as compared to all of the rest of them, to, to rescind the vote. So that would be, that's my question. Either, I, what I was expecting to see is either just an increase of $5 million, or the complete reversal of the $3,250,000, because you're now asking the taxpayers for $4 million, for $8,423,21. So I know everybody has the, the Part B, I know you don't have the other ones, but I do have it, and I could pass it around to you. It's the same as, it should be the same as what we have for each one of the ones listed on the, on the, on the second page under B. So that, that's my question. Is it written correctly, and will it do what we want it to do when it doesn't have the same information or anything else like, like Part B? Thank you.
Thank you, Petra.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep, I think I understand the question, I'll look to, are there other council questions I would ask? Maybe Judy to, I take a stab at, at answering one of those questions that we received from public comment, that the $8 million is a result of both the $5 million and the $3 million, but Judy, would you mind walking us through that one more time? It is $10 million, so I think it's worth spending a few more moments, making sure that we understand it both here in the chamber and at home for all the viewing public on Channel 22.
Yes, good evening. I was trying to follow all of that, but I want to reassure the council and the public that this resolution was also reviewed by bond counsel. So the original resolution had the 3.25 borrowing, and so because we're gonna be using those ARPA funds in a, in a different way, we needed to do a whole, they recommended to do a whole new resolution, completely rescinding the prior resolution and start fresh, and, we needed to do that within that 60-day timeframe. So it has been approved by the legal bond counsel, and I didn't catch all of it, but I think what she, what Petra Huda was referring to is that we didn't lay out the actual rescinding dollar amounts, but this definitely suffices, because we're just taking the original resolution and rescinding it in its entirety, which was itemized. And we do have the attached other funding with that resolution of what we'll be using for the funding, and then just doing a bond issue for up to the $8.4 million and change.
Thank you, Judy, and apologies to the city manager, I didn't ask her to bring you up, but I appreciate.
No, and if I didn't answer that question, I might've missed a little bit, but I'd be more than happy to.
I think the heart of the question was that, one, to make sure that this is, this is going to suffice for what we're looking to do, and that's, on a, on a blanket statement, if I can speak, would be to rescind the monies that we were formerly using of ARPA funds to pay for community campus.
Right.
Rescind that in, in its entirety, and raise other monies, or issue the ability, grant the authority to issue bonds in, in a similar amount, so that we can purchase the community campus. And as I understand, the answers that you've given, that the language that we've received or is received, in addition to the previous language that is itemized under Section, or Resolution 26-2021, was approved by bond counsel to deliver that effect.
Yes.
And I think that was at the heart of the intent with the former, or the, the public speaker, to make sure that we were aligning with that effort, and so I thank you for, for answering that question. Counselor Moreau?
I just want to restate, because I think I can help explain the difference between the two. So in, in the, in the prior motion, we're rescinding portions of authority, not the entire thing, and therefore, we have the exact dollar amount that we're rescinding from originally bonding and moving it to the other, to the second one, right? So I think there, she was confused as to why we're doing specific dollar amounts in the prior resolution.
Right.
Where we didn't in this one, and that was my understanding of it, and maybe you can confirm that.
Yes, because with this resolution, we're rescinding in its entirety the previous resolution. With the $5 million one, we had itemized the actual resolutions that were adopted by the previous city council, and this is monies that remain that we haven't issued a bond for yet, and so we're just rescinding that portion. So we have to be specific on the amount that we're rescinding.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you, Judy.
Thanks, Judy.
Any, without any further questions, we will need a roll call vote on this.
Okay. I just want to make sure there's a motion.
Oh, was there not? Ooh, maybe not.
Yeah, no, we have not made a motion yet.
Okay.
I'd, go ahead.
Same on me. Well, I will wait, a move to adopt the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Taber.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Moreau.
Yes.
Counselor Bagley.
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi.
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Mayor McCacklin.
Yes.
And for the folks at home, when we do something like that, it will require a two-thirds vote of the council in order to do so. That's why we have the roll call and also just for folks paying attention at home. So next up, we have city manager items which require action. City manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. To follow up on the good work of the cemetery committee, we are pleased to bring forward a request for partial funding for their headstone cleaning project. The city would purchase supplies to support the project and provide certain logistical support. And as the public and the council should be made aware, there currently exists, within our many trusts, an historic cemetery trust with approximately $5,939 in trust assets. A copy of the trust is attached in your packet for reference. This headstone cleaning project is consistent with the trust purposes, and therefore, I would request that the city council authorize costs not to exceed $2,500 come from the trust to support the work, which would not only help this particular project, but help the cemetery committee and staff to help increase the visibility of this trust to be in existence so that we could encourage future donations from citizens and interested parties that could help offset the costs for future projects of the committee.
Await the sample motion.
Your Honor, I would move that the city council authorize the expenditure of up to $2,500 from the historic cemetery trust to cover the costs of the headstone cleaning project.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much. Item number two would be the approval of a farmer's market agreement with our new vendor, Seacoast Eat Local, for the 2022 season. A copy of the license agreement is attached in your packet, and we look forward to working with the new vendor.
With sample motion?
Your Honor, I move to authorize the city manager to execute the license agreement as presented, allowing Seacoast Eat Local to operate a farmer's market at the municipal complex on Saturdays from May 7, 2022, through November 5, 2022.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, any discussion?
A quick comment. I wanted to thank city staff and specifically the city attorney's office for incorporating language regarding the single-use plastics disposable ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Denton. We can, after working up an appetite washing headstones, we can all go to the opening of the farmer's market. Look forward to that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next up would be what we've already handled earlier in the evening with the naming of Connor's Cottage. Thank you for taking that item first. Next would be a request from staff, and most notably with the direction of Kim McNamara, our health officer, to commit $65,000 in ARPA funding toward a public health profile and needs assessment. This has been something I know that Kim has asked for long before COVID and long before the ability to recognize funds from this pandemic. And what it would do is to update data last collected in 2006, which would identify our health needs for the purpose of informing investments in community health that would help us understand how best to deploy ARPA funding. And it would also serve as a great source of information for local nonprofits who need data such as this when they apply for grants. So in preparing to best utilize our recommendation and work with the community on how to spend ARPA funding, we would like to allocate $65,000 in the ARPA funds we have on hand toward this public health and profile, public health profile and needs assessment. And the last thing I'll say, Mayor, Your Honor, is that we did hold a public hearing for consideration of this particular project as part of the April 11 ARPA listening session.
Any motion? Sample motion?
Your Honor, I move that we obligate $65,000 in ARPA funds towards a public health profile and needs assessment.
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion? Counselor Cook? Oh, I was looking over that way. Counselor Cook, you got it? You want it?
Thank you, Mayor. In my eyes, this is exactly the kind of project that was envisioned when ARPA was created, to help communities deal with the impacts of the pandemic and specifically around issues of public health. So I think that this is really a very important use of these funds, and I fully support this move.
Assistant Mayor, then Counselor Taber.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to share my appreciation for the health officer and Kim and all the hard work her office has done. I know personally, even before I was elected, I can account to how much Kim did for the community during the COVID crisis, the height of the COVID crisis, and how much work and effort she put into making sure that, you know, every demographic and every resident in our city had access to medical help and to vaccines and to just survive a really hard time. So I just wanted to give a moment to appreciate you and all the work that you've done for that and the work you continue to do.
Counselor Taber.
Thanks, Your Honor. Just a comment. I would hope that we, in this study, do mental health and weigh it equally as physical health. There was a story last October about Maya McKinnon and Alice Weir at the high school, two students who formed a wellness club because they wanted to involve students in talking about anxiety, depression, all the things that high school kids were seeing more and more, particularly after COVID. So if this study could develop actionable data for those teens to do the kind of work they're doing and for guidance counselors, I think that would be a great thing for the community.
Yes, I'm, thank you, Kim, for all the work that you've done throughout the pandemic and continue to do. I think that it would be the expectation of the council that this would also identify mental health needs as well. I think that COVID has been an enormous, enormous difficulty in dealing with because it's pulled us away from one another as a community and created opportunities for unhealthy practices or to not be able to intervene in health outcomes as we have done in the past. So to identify those that we haven't really spent the time identifying in over 15 years, I think is, you know, if there's ever a time to do it, to update those numbers, especially as they would have an impact on nonprofits, the ability to do better work, I think the time is now. So all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Your Honor. Request, next would be for a public hearing regarding the settlement with Sobos Square LLC. As mentioned at the special city council meeting on April 6, the city voted to accept a settlement agreement with Sobos Square LLC. This request of the council tonight would look to establish a public hearing on the proposed supplemental appropriation resolution for the next city council meeting on May 2. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. The last item under city manager action items would be a water service access easement for property located in Greenland at 410 Portsmouth Road. This comes at the request of local attorney Colby Gamester on behalf of his client, 410 Portsmouth Ave LLC, to accept a water services access easement over property located at 410 Portsmouth Ave in Greenland. It's to support a new 10-unit condominium development, which was approved by the town of Greenland last year. This development would be proposed to be served by City of Portsmouth Water. And therefore, a water service access easement would be necessary for our public works staff to access the infrastructure and in the case of an emergency. So the Public Works Department has been working with legal to work on this process and to, and the DPW can, has vouched for the ability to, for the city to serve this development, subject to our ordinary processes and procedures, including the payment of requisite fees and a capacity use surcharge. So it is the recommendation of legal and public works working together that I be authorized to negotiate and accept this access easement for water services with the document that was provided by the attorney. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Counselor Lombardi.
And when I'm reading through this, I noticed a, there's a question of whether we were supplying irrigation and other, and fire suppression water. And I don't know what, where that was. I didn't think that was resolved at this point. I'm just wondering.
City manager, has it been resolved?
I don't know, but if the council were willing to suspend rules and bring up attorney Gamester, it looks like he may have the answer to that question.
Well, he stood up, so. It's indicative of.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
A. We need a roll call on this? Do we need a roll call on suspending the rules if it's unanimous?
No, Your Honor, I do not believe you do.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Welcome, Colby.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. To answer your question, there is no irrigation included with this project. At one point, there was, that was removed, but the fire suppression system will be fed off the city line as well as the normal domestic supply.
Okay, great.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gamester. So we have a motion. It's on the floor. Any other discussion? I'll simply note for those watching at home, there's the construction of moving that line and then from an enterprise standpoint, they pay in as we all pay to that, and that's how that's self-sustaining, or how that fund sustains itself through usage fees. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next up, consent agenda. Proper motion, move to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And then presentations and written communications. First is email correspondence. Wait a motion.
Will we accept and place on file?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We moved up the presentation both on the cargo facility and cemetery committee. Again, thank you. Last up is a petition from State Street residents and neighbors regarding maintaining the historic brick sidewalks in the West End. Sample motion, move to refer to the city manager and public works director for report back.
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion? Counselor Bagley.
Yes, I want to first thank everybody that wrote in. I did want to put out there to the people watching at home and the people that wrote in, the disadvantages of the brick sidewalks, why I think we can all appreciate their historic nature, is they are more difficult for people with accessibility issues. They're more slippery in the wintertime, they have a higher cost, and they're more difficult to maintain. So I would hope that when we take a look at this, we consider a solution that we used on Islington Street, which is a concrete sidewalk, which is more safe and practical and easier to maintain with a brick inlay. So I don't know what the city report back would be, but I hope that option is considered.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Counselor Moreau?
I also hope that the report back would give us the difference in costs between each of them as well, just so that we have that information when we're thinking about that.
I would expect it would.
Yes.
Counselor Taber.
Yeah, this took me to a look at the CIP and through that, the original sidewalk conditions report. And there's nearly 4,000 feet of brick sidewalk on State Street. It's almost a mile. That's the longest stretch of brick that we have. And about 600 or 700 feet of that 4,000 is fair to poor. So, and I was walking there in October, some of us may have. It's in pretty rough shape. So I think it's in the CIP for this year for a reason, and it's important, whichever solution we pick, that that get fixed.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. This petition really highlighted for me some of the differences that we have around the city. You know, we have different policies on sidewalks, where we have brick, where we have concrete. And I think it's important periodically for us to think about those policies and revisit them based upon what resident interest is and resident concern. And also to think more sincerely, as the city changes and develops, that whether or not our policy is still the right one. And so I hope that in the report back, we have a better idea for not just these residents who sent in a petition, but if there are additional residents who also want brick sidewalks in that neighborhood versus currently our process requiring concrete.
Thank you, Counselor Cook. Counselor Bagley.
Yes, and this may be a question for the city manager, for Director Rice, but as the council member who sits on the parking traffic and safety committee, it might be good to highlight that the brick sidewalks, to my understanding downtown, are not paid for with regular tax revenue, but they're paid for and maintained with parking revenue. Would that be a correct statement?
I think it depends on where you're talking about. But Peter could be brought up here.
What's, well, I would say, let's put that in the, a better generalization in the report back. You know, it's, this was brought to my attention, I brought it to the city manager, and I was simply interested, well, one, I'm always, I'm always interested when there's a petition, I will say that. And I'm always interested with, when people get involved in government, and there's some passionate folks that were involved in this. It also highlighted to me a city council policy, and sometimes we vote on policies that, you know, maybe could be improved. It was interesting to me to find out that the HDC, well, sidewalks, brick sidewalks in the HDC were, in perpetuity will be, brick sidewalks. It also included the South End in that, when it was written, that portions that were not in the HDC, which I also found interesting. And then any other brick sidewalk that exists, it's basically up to the council to decide whether or not we want to keep that as brick sidewalk or not. And so it's, I think as, you know, Portsmouth changes and, you know, it's always in a constant state of change. It's interesting to have an understanding of the policy, but it's also interesting for residents to understand the cost and the benefit of both brick and concrete and have a conversation. So with that report back, I would expect, we went, we'll find out the cost in that, we'll find out policy, we'll find out maybe, to Counselor Bagley's point, safety issues regarding that with regards to DPW, and then any funding mechanisms. So somewhat robust. I expect that to be a couple of weeks, but I also want to give notice to any of the affected neighbors, advance notice around that so they can have the conversation, you know, in the light of day, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify that even further, we plan to put out bids for the work the end of next week, which would be the end of April. And we typically allow for bids to be out on the street for two to three weeks, so you can anticipate an update either at the second May meeting or the first June meeting. But we will, we will get costs for all of those scenarios.
Okay. So do we, we have the sample motion and then we have the discussion? So any other comments? Any other questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, what's difficult about the second term and having switched the order, I always feel like once we get through all the city manager items, you know, it's like, all right, Lori, I'm coming home. But this is when we start our part of the agenda. So I will be brief. Appointments to be considered, Michael Griffin, who also serves on the cemetery, has put his name in, an application to be considered for the Portsmouth Housing Authority. Robert Bogardis and Corey Sumerian have put their applications in to be reconsidered, to reappointment to the REC Board. And then appointments to be voted this evening, appointment of Lynn Vicaro to the Conservation Committee, appointment of Celeste Brooks to the Cemetery Committee, and the appointment of Jody Record to the Library Board of Trustees. I will await a motion to vote to appoint those previous appointments.
So moved.
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion? Thank you to those putting your names forward and look forward to watching you serve Portsmouth. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Onto Counselor Moreau.
Yes, thank you. The Land Use Committee has been hard at work, and I would like to thank both our planning director, Beverly Zent, and our principal planner, Nick Cracknell, for all the information that they have gathered together and putting together this draft report that is one of the attachments that I have supplied you guys, existing conditions and strategy report. I think that gives us, you know, really taking everything this council has talked about and wants and tried to put it into the effect of these are the goals of our, based off of our policies and the policies for our housing policy and everything that we have, and pull together what everyone that's going to be reviewing these moving forward is going to use. And it also then gives us also some of the existing conditions that we have, and they've been pulling together and spending hours and hours with data, which is much appreciated, pulling together the numbers that are here to really show us where the trends are going so that we can keep all of those things in mind. With that said, they also helped pull together the phased implementation. So phase one is a true cleanup of unintended consequences. We have a lot of things that happen in the zoning that as you actually put it to work, sometimes you realize that wasn't our intent. Let's go back and make those adjustments. So everything in that very first whole phase one section is truly just trying to clean stuff, clean up the zoning so that we make sure we're going to get what we intended when we actually drafted zoning. With that said, there is also phases two and three, which we can talk about in a minute. But I am going to be asking the council tonight to make a recommendation that we move phase one to the planning board for review and recommendations back so that then they can review, finalize, see if there's any other additions, how, hold a public hearing. And then they, it is my intent that they will have that been, then back to us to have our first reading, in which case then we'd have second reading. And I'm very hopeful that if we can wrap this all up, we could have these, you know, if I can, you know, suspend the rules and get readings two and three together, we might have it done by the end of June. So, you know, give us a couple months, and I think those initial months can all be put into the books. And then we can really, in the meantime, start working on phases two and three. I'd like to ask the city council for anything, anything you see that you feel like needs to be addressed. But we really hoping if you can find a way to look at objectives and stakeholders, and if you find that there are any objectives that we have under phases two and three especially, or under the stakeholders that you feel like, no, you need to reach out to these folks as well and get their feedback. It doesn't have to be tonight, but I'd love for you to reach out to me and let me know your thoughts on those. And if there's anything we can add to that. With that said, does anyone have any questions about what's there?
I think that was a polite way of saying, keep it high level, council. Don't rewrite this. It's going to get rewritten.
There's a lot of people that are going to get into the weeds. So you guys really need to give us the overarching objectives.
Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Counselor Moreau, for all your work on this. And we did speak earlier in the day. Last week, we received an email from a resident with quite a lot of detailed information about EV chargers and actually the zoning challenges that are, that almost prohibit EV chargers where we'd like to see them put forward. I had the opportunity to meet with the resident over the, the weekend and ran into the mayor, getting a cup of coffee. And what I would like to, in one of these three phases, I think this could be something that your Land Use Committee could quickly rectify these issues, because when the land, when the zoning was written, you know, EV chargers didn't exist. If there's not a mechanism to allow them, that is kind of a Dylan's Rule thing. You can't have them at all. So we're very limited where we can have EV chargers, and that could affect private enterprise from being able to put them in places in Portsmouth. So I think this could be a top or a high priority and maybe a relatively simple adjustment to the zoning. And I think your committee is, is the perfect place for it.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a great idea. We should look at every zoning as we're looking at the different areas, see whether or not that can be incorporated in and how that can be accommodated throughout our parking, you know, if it's going to, if they're going to provide that, then maybe we change one of their parking requirements or have incentives in that sort of way. So I think that would be very helpful. We can take a look at that.
Counselor Denton?
Sam, very impressed with Counselor Bagley here. I actually reached out early on to see when in the process would be the best time to insert something like that. And that's why I was asking, I think on Saturday or Sunday, when the phases were. So that, I'm impressed. Thank you. Doesn't take a lot to impress a one-armed man.
So we still need a motion. So I will wait, the sample mo-
Yeah, I'm happy to make the motion. That's not a problem. I have it here somewhere. I know I do. I'd make the motion that we move to request the city council approve the 2022 regulatory work plan and to send phase one draft regulatory amendments to the planning board for review and recommendation back to the city council, at which point first reading can be scheduled.
Second.
And any other discussion, comments, questions? Thank you, Counselor Moreau. This is a lot of work. But when we think of zoning, it's, you know, working back from the, the idea that we want, you know, a community that feels like a community, you know, how do we achieve that? Zoning is a part of that, a big part of that. It governs the inputs that we're able to put in. Thank you for putting in the time to create these, these cleanups and look forward to phases two and three to be forthcoming.
We'll be back.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. The Governance Committee, when we initially were looking at adoptions and changes in rules to make recommendations on changes in public dialogue, we also discussed ways to address another council concern, which was how do we get, get citizens engaged in the budget? And at the time, we decided that the, the best way to do that this year, specifically because of our limited timeframe for budget discussions, would be to use public dialogue as the way to get citizens engaged. And so since we've adopted the changes to the rules that allow a new format for public dialogue, we would like to go ahead and move forward with a recommendation to hold our first public dialogue session around the budget. With that, I'd like to move to schedule a public dialogue session in May to discuss the city budget with community members.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Moreau?
I just think it's a great idea.
Me too. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is our approval of grants and donations versus the acceptance of donation to the skateboard park. Brenda Purnaville of $1,025.
Your Honor? I would move that we approve items 16A, B, and C, the one you just mentioned, the $300 donation to the senior center and the reimbursement to a senior program from the state of New Hampshire of $14,896.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. City manager, any informational items?
Not at this meeting, Your Honor.
Then I will put under miscellaneous, we have the President of the United States coming to Portsmouth tomorrow. There'll be some road closure on Market Street from 10 to 4, I believe. If anybody's watching at home, to be aware of that and be patient with all that is required to have the leader of the free world join us here in Portsmouth for an afternoon. Any other miscellaneous? If we had that information on Wednesday, I'm sure we would have put that under informational items. Okay. I await a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Portsmouth.